Here with us this evening. I would like to excuse Councilmember Barker. He's our Assistant Fire Chief and also Fire Marshal. And he is down at their meeting seat there announcing the new Fire Chief of the district. So we will excuse him. And with that. Thank you. So with that. He was assigned to give us our thought or implication and we just in the pledge of allegiance. But we have Mr. Burns who is going to take that assignment seat.
I would love to tell you I graciously volunteered. Mayor asked me, you know, be sure most of it's what you do. I'm just not comfortable with the with the whole prayer in public thing. So I said, well, you give a thought. You know, the one thought that jumps in my mind is is something I fall back on regularly. And I have since my early days in in my other in my other life. And and that was the thought that that was those given is if it was easy, everyone would do it. And I fall back on that. So if it was easy, everyone would do that. And it comes up regularly. And and tonight I'm with the group that if it was easy, everyone would sit where you are and make the decisions you're making. And and I've said this before, standing here, anyone can do this during an easy times. Anybody can make easy decisions. If it was easy, everyone would do it. So that's just pops in my head regularly. So my thought for the evening. If you'll stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you, Kevin.
Thanks for being volunteered.
Yes. Just a short notice, you did an excellent job.
Bodily pervert.
Yes. I may be a little something here, so no. I take that back. Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda. At this point in time. Councilmembers, you've had a chance to look at our agenda and go through the packet. Is there anything you need to disclose in regards to potential or accomplish the interest? Anyone? I see none. We go into item two now. This is a discussion or an action to consider. Our City Council minutes of August eighth. And I would ask if there's any amendments to those minutes or suggestions for improvement. Oh, Councilmember Extron, let's go to you.
I I did find a misspelling, actually a completely change of the name. Jacob Sorensen, his name is not Jesus. So that was it.
I think actually Councilmember Dowpas also.
Did you find that one as well?
No, actually, I did not have that. So good job.
Say good teamwork.
There you go.
It looks like you have some comments, Councilmember Dowpas.
Yeah, just a couple of things in the presentation by Cherry Days, the Cherry Days Committee on page three. It talks about them returning nineteen thousand dollars. Just to clarify that the money was never given to them because it was never they never needed it. So that's just a clarification. And then also on page seven. It talks about the seventeen hundred North project or not well, repair of the culverts and the street. And it was estimated that it was going to be about five hundred thousand dollars. And then I just wanted to make sure you added that the actual engineer, city engineer estimate that we now have is one hundred and six thousand dollars. Just so if anyone goes back to it, they know that originally estimated at five hundred. And then now we know that it's one oh six. And then last but not least, I can't remember what page this is on. I can find it after for you, Ryan. There was just a it said that something about the mayor was taken back. Instead of back, it was taken a back.
Okay.
So just take off the A. Page four.
Page four, thank you.
Is that it, Councilmember Dowpas?
Yes.
I would just like to add one additional thing for somebody to look at. I don't think I was surprised about the fact that we were going to have storage units as part of that project down there. But I was surprised as it was coming back to the council again after we'd basically given thumbs up. So if somebody could look at that, it says I was really surprised that there are going to be storage units there. I was just surprised that we were after we give them the thumbs up that we were addressing issues. So, okay. So with those amendments, would we have a motion to approve the minutes? Or do you want to defer that?
Mayor, I know that we approved the minutes from City Council meeting on August eighth of twenty twenty-three as amended.
Thank you, Councilmember Extron. Yeah, second, second by Councilmember Swanson. Any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Looks like the motion passes.
Mayor, if I may very quickly. Just in in the correction of the minutes. My old English is coming out. A back is an adverb, so taken aback is what you'd say when you're caught off guard or suddenly surprised by something you weren't expecting. Taken aback. Taken back is when you refer to a memory or something in the past.
That was my memory, but a back is good then. Do you want me to correct it? Ever thought about teaching a language?
Were your words actually a back or were your words back?
With a description of what now? Whoever was transcribed.
What is the definition of this? What is this? So we do have one issue on the agenda tonight that would take a roll call vote. Just as a he might be able to start here with Councilmember Extron. And then we'll just work our way down. Why Councilmember Swanson, Dowpas, and Severing. So now we will have item number three, which is public comments. And you probably get tired of hearing this, but if you would limit your comments to no longer than five minutes. If you would state your name and if you're a resident of North Ogden, be appreciated. So we'll now go to our active agenda and have item number three, public comments. John, I don't know if there's anyone online. But if there, and there is, would you please watch for comments? Okay, any public comments this evening? Was it Prossman?
Yes. Grant Prossman, North Ogden resident. I lived here when there were more, when when there were fewer stop signs than there are now stoplights in town. So a long history here. Each of you have a handout, had a PowerPoint presentation, but we didn't coordinate the problem up. We're talking about Barker Park tonight, I see. And this is just a summary. Since Barker Park was the Barker Farm was was purchased. There's been kind of a surge in development initially and then since the amphitheater was finished, there hasn't been much in terms of healthy and ongoing project. So like recognizing city budgets or diet, decided to start a five oh one C three. Linda and I had sponsored cleanup projects over there for a number of years. And we've joined forces to move this forward. We'd like to build this using volunteer labor and volunteer funding with very few North Ogden city funds or resources. To date, there's thousands of voluntary hours that have been spent to move this forward. And as a volunteer group, we really appreciate the support North Ogden City has given us to this point. We have some high quality folks on there. City progress to date, North Ogden has been very helpful in our projects over there to this point. The only formal we got to City Council plan was the two thousand two grassland plan. The twenty fifteen Barker Park Committee recommendations were reviewed and discussed in detail. But we've had a couple of people check the minutes for a year before and a year following that discussion. And there was no formal approval of the council. Be that as it may, there is a lot of support for that and a lot of people put in a lot of time to put that together. So it included the grassland plan and the twenty fifteen plan. What the Build Barker Park Committee has done, if it turned to page four, is combine the two plans. It's taken the open space that was available in the twenty fifteen plan and combined it with the ideas of vegetation and so on that are better in the grassland plan. So it's really a hybrid of the two. On page five, you get a look at how the gardens are going to be. And rather than rather than just planting gardens, we're going to have them thematic. So we can actually sell signs that advertise the gardens and say, this is a pioneer garden. This was Native American flora that was there. We've added a couple of things that were not on the original plan. One is the chicken coop cradle. Going along that, that is a great location for instruction. You can get views of all the mountains, the valley, plus there's a lot of history there. When I was a kid, if you needed eggs, you just went to the Barker's back porch and picked up the eggs and left them. There they were, fresh. That's a part of our heritage that needs to really be preserved and all of the other things. On page six, you get an idea of some of the cool things that are in the hollows. There were no definitive plans for developing the hollows in either of the proposals. We've worked with the Forest Services on and determined that we can add paths through those hollows that do not need to be handicap accessible, making handicap accessible with ruined tree lines can do it. Here are some ideas for things we want to we want to do to grow it out. There there are lots of places to purchase these from. One of the things that we're really excited about is the planter splash pad. When planners want to get cold, they went into the cricks and jumped in and cooled off. And so this will be for the kids, it'll be smooth flat rocks. It'll be a recycling process. We have some of the other potential kinds of things we can put in the park. All of these are available and accessible. We have a company in England that manufactures all of them, but the import costs were a little high. But we have a couple of companies around here working with recycled material that can produce, already producing every one of these things. On page eight, a number of the pictures here are from the Farmington area, from the plaza in Farmington. If you go out to Cinemark Theater, you walk right into a lot of these these things that are there. Our intent is to fundraise with these. We'll be checking on prices for all of them and then we'll approach different donors that we've identified and say, you want to buy this, you want to sponsor that? And that way we'll be able to fund this.
Thanks, thank you. I think we do have an item on the agenda where we'll probably have an in-depth discussion on this and then further comments. So I'd really love to jump into it soon, sorry.
My name is Reed Miller from North Ogden. Hey, this is just an announcement. There's this gentleman, Mark Cook, from Colorado, who is a cybersecurity expert. He has canceled, quit his job and is donating his life now to develop and all these different things with regard to election security. He has developed the facts and the technology and all the things that he has he has done and has has annotated over fifty different ways that our governments have used fraud and corruption in the in the election system. We got him to come to Utah. He will be coming on the eleventh of October, that's a Wednesday. And any city council members or or city people can go into his RV and see his equipment, see his facts, and it'll just open people's eyes. So that's just an announcement for anyone who wants to just see those things that have happened. That the election of twenty twenty was certainly an example of how how things were went awry with regard to the election. So eleventh of October. So I am the point of content for this. Okay.
Chris Baltimore, North Ogden, wasn't going to come up, but just listening to the Bill Barker part, it is a spectacular thing. And I've gotten as involved as I possibly can. And that's just something that I think North Ogden itself would be hugely. It's going to be take a lot of the stuff to do it, obviously, but I think in the end it's going to look spectacular. But and then the other thing, I guess, I've just been looking at fences on private, you know, on on public land. I know we were talking about that last time. I think I thought a lot about it. I think the whole point is is that it's not that person's property. You know, to fence it in is one thing, but to actually close it off so nobody can see it is something else. And I just, if you did that to your neighbor's yard, just, you know, that's what I was thinking that I don't think they would like that anyways. That's it.
John, anyone online?
No raised hands.
Okay, we will move on from public comments. We will go to item number four on agenda. I understand the Councilmember Severing. You want this item addressed. Would you like to make some comments? I think this is looking to a man city code eight dash A, which is private landscaping on public property. Did you have some comments or introductions you wanted to make here?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, I just wanted, and I hope I haven't brought this up too much, but my curiosity really just comes down to I've talked to Councilmember Barker about this and he and I have talked. And I know that he's, I know that Councilman Barker has talked to other council members on this. But I just was just simply curious. And I think the citizens would be interested to know. We don't have a lot of situations where there's somebody who's leasing ground from the city. It's pretty rare in the city. But I think the thing that came down to my and Councilman Barker's thought simply was if we allow somebody, we trust them to lease the ground. Is there really a need for transparency? And if there's a need for transparency, I just think it's something simple to say, why would there be a need for transparency? So far, Mayor, I haven't heard an answer. I'm just curious to know.
Okay, I think the, if I recall, correct if I'm wrong. We addressed this issue last council meeting or prior, I think we had a short council meeting. So the it was postponed to take a vote on amending that. I think it was from seventy-five percent transparency down to sixty-five percent transparency was the issue. If the council wanted to amend the ordinance. Because I think the ordinance at this point in time does allow for fencing, but it has to be seventy-five percent or greater transparency. Is that correct, John?
Yes.
So I think the issue, as I understand it on the agenda tonight, is does the council, because there already is a provision for fencing that doesn't. You know, once this is opened up, I guess it's opened up to any type of amendment. But I believe that would probably answer your question, which we can have a discussion on regarding the request, which I think was to say, okay, if we're going to allow fencing, seventy-five percent transparency really kind of only allows for a chain link fence or what was the other one here you called it, John, the box?
So there's a few examples on the screen. There's a wrought iron and then like a field fence.
Or a chain. Those are the qualifications. So I think in the discussion. I think in the discussion phase, your question, the answer based upon each council member's approach to this. So could we proceed with? Seeing if there's a motion to amend that, what the motion would be. And then we could have discussion or would you like me to kind of allow each council member at this point in time to?
Mayor, you take it, you take it however, whatever direction you'd like to go in here.
I'm one for efficiency. But I want to make sure we have that as a time for discussion, which we can. Does anyone have a motion regarding the amendment of city code eight dash eight? I think the requested amendment was to allow for less transparency from seventy-five to sixty-five. Is that correct, John?
It's it's worded slightly differently, but yes, that's an accurate representation.
The actual wording is?
It's it says it can't be more than twenty-five percent non-transparent, but it's the same numbers.
Okay. So the requested amendment, I believe, was to change that number to fifteen percent? Or thirty-five percent?
Thirty-five percent.
Thirty-five percent. Okay, do we have a motion to amend city code eight dash eight regarding private landscape on public property? If we do, this would be in reference to ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eighteen. Do we have a motion to amend the code? I am seeing no motion, so I guess the amendment of the code lies for lack of a motion. That be correct, John?
Yes.
Okay, now, to answer Councilmember Severing's question, which I'm finding, would anyone like to state where they feel having a transparent fence is relative to lease property? Councilmember Swanson?
Yeah, when we first had this discussion about whether or not we was actually leased ground. If you all remember, at the end of that discussion, we were at a point where we weren't going to allow fencing at all. And I can't remember who motioned to postpone that discussion at that point so that we could come back. And it was a couple of weeks later that I came back with what I thought was a decent compromise. If we would allow some fencing, as long as it was seventy-five percent, had seventy-five percent opacity. And I just thought it was a reasonable compromise between no fencing and, you know, citizen over mentioned and others have mentioned in our meetings. Essentially blocking it off and making it look like it's private property. And I know multiple council members have mentioned often on issues or concerns with whether or not we would allow fencing. And that's why I came up with that, what I thought was a compromise a month or so, month and a half ago. I'm still okay with fencing with, you know, that seventy-five percent opacity. And my my feeling hasn't changed on that.
Yeah, any other comments?
Councilmember Extron? I don't. I think once you fence it in, it just looks like private property. And so, you know, even if it's, you can see through it, there is a fence, there's a barrier to the public into it. It's essentially just annexed. And so I thought kind of what the intent was is that like, yeah, you can improve it so that it, you know, you've got something that looks really nice and it's next to your property. But it's, you know, I think once you fence something in, it just becomes problematic to even the appearance of being just owned by that person. So I I really would like to go back to just no fence. That's that's my opinion.
Councilmember Dowpas?
I think I mentioned this in the last meeting, but the more I think about it, it makes to me more sense to not have them fenced. Just go without fencing, still allow the leasing of the property so people can, I mean, ultimately helps us. They can maintain the property and keep it weed free, et cetera. But that's what I lean towards. But to Councilman Swanson's thoughts, you know, he truly was coming up with what he thought was a compromise between the two. I'm I'm not completely against how it is right now, so.
So you're just partially against it then?
I'm just partially against it.
And to my point, I think Councilmember Extron made a good point here. Once something's fenced in, the question I think has to be asked, is it really public property? Because that's really, even on the lease, it's still owned by the city, right? And so I think it does create confusion. And I'm here in real estate and, you know, if I was buying that property and saw it all fenced in with a common fence, I'd think that's a pretty nice sized yard. So it would be, I think, the proof, I mean, the seller would have to disclose that, obviously, that that's not their property. But how often does that, you know, take place? I was thinking about, I believe, on the seller's reps. Like you have to say, the property's in compliance with all ordinances of the city. And so I I often think about those who have rock walls that are above the four foot engineered walls in the city, how they're going to check that box when they go to sell their home. Because a particular area of our city is has a lot of walls. Yeah. So let me just ask this question, and I think the motion before was to amend it for less transparency. Am I hearing the Councilmember Extron that, John, correct me if I'm wrong. I think it's open to amend it in any way. Am I seeing that Councilmember Extron, they want to make a motion here to not have fencing?
So it is open for discussion. Any motion that the council would like to to motion could be considered.
Let me ask this question then. Is there a motion anyone would like to make up this or should we move on?
Mayor, I would like to make the motion that we amend the ordinance to not allow fencing on public property by private citizens.
That would be under city code eight dash eight?
Eight dash eight, yes.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Swanson?
I'll just reiterate that I'm still okay, you know, in case somebody wants to put a raised garden in and try and keep some critters out. I'm still okay with a with a fence, a minimal fence, you know, seven chain link.
I think we talked about that with our dear thing that they could fence.
Yeah, we're we're around that. This is property line fencing. I think we're talking about that.
Okay, we have a motion. Is we've had some discussion of Mr. Call?
So this is the language I've modified to reflect that motion. I just put it in that we'd eliminate the word privacy and then the more than twenty-five percent non-transparent. So it would just say they're not allowed to put permanent structures, fences, underground sprinklers. So that would just eliminate all fencing.
Is there any further discussion on the issue? Okay, let's start in our voting. Councilmember Extron?
Yes.
Councilmember Swanson?
No.
Councilmember Dowpas?
Yes.
Councilmember Severing?
No.
And you guys are going to do this to me? I believe the fencing public property is inappropriate, so I would go up there. Okay. Let's move on to item number five. Discussion or action on the site plan for drive-through business of the Village of Prominence Point project. So this is a project that's located in approximately eighteen seventy-one Washington Boulevard. I think our presenter tonight will be Mr. Scott.
Mayor, Council. We have before you tonight consideration of an administrative application of site plan as part of the MPC zone for Village of Prominence Point in line with the development agreement. So I just want to point out a couple of couple of things, just because this is a little bit unique, is that generally the Land Use Authority for site plans for administrative applications would be our planning commission. In the case of specific development agreements or the way that MPC code is worded, that development agreement puts this in the hands of the council tonight for the commercial areas of the Village of Prominence Point. So reason that we're seeing it. And then just reminder that a previous council meeting, I think two weeks ago, the council elected to take drive-through uses, which were previously permitted in this area of Village of Prominence Point and increase the the ability of those drive-throughs to have the drive-through circle around the entire building. So by my interpretation, those were always permitted in there. It was just a matter of the orientation of the drive-through. It was just a matter of the orientation of the drive-through as it relates to the building. So just a couple of quick points before we start. Um. Applicant has prepared a set of, uh, site plan documents that include architectural renderings, landscape plan. And then just a general, um, kind of top-down site plan for your. For your review, John, I don't know if you're going to go there. Perfect. Um. I don't want to go through the whole, you know, ten pages of the site plan application. So what I'm going to focus on tonight is the recommendation document. That has the areas within the MPC code that. That council has some opportunity to weigh in on whether or not the spirit of the code, spirit of the MPC code is met by this development. And because there's a development agreement, we do have some latitude in that decision-making. It's not just a hard line between the two. So. Um, to begin with, the building itself by the MPC code needs to be sixty-five percent of the width of the frontage of the lot. And so in this case, the building is a little bit narrower than that sixty-five percent. Um, but given that it's a drive-through that has parking on one side and a drive-through aisle that runs around the entire building. Staff isn't convinced that you could have a building that would be sixty-five percent of the width of that lot and still fit. The actual use itself as a as a drive-through. So you have a permitted use, drive-through, and that permitted use on this particular lot. I don't think would necessarily fit in there. So that's something for the council to consider. The MPC code is is generally designed to be a walkable area. It's more of a form-based code. And to give you a a visual representation of what I think the MPC wants you to see would be like a line of the cannery buildings. Along that entire frontage of Washington Boulevard, where you have zero or really limited setback. Buildings built right to the front, any and all parking in the back, all the pedestrian orientations out onto the street. And. I think that the ten years that this project has been contemplated have shown that that's a really hard sell in this area of the city. That it's a desire we may have had, but the reality of the market is that that just hasn't been what's been produced. Um, to include a car wash, which is an apparently auto-oriented use. There's not a lot of pedestrians walking to a car wash use.
Makes sense?
So for this particular use, the site plan is not, or sorry, the setback is not from zero to ten feet. Setback on this is forty feet. Um, seems like a lot. Washington Boulevard is a really wide corridor and and the actual outside of that right of way is kind of ambiguous in some areas, but. Building setback is approximately forty feet, which allows the landscape buffer that was required in the land in the development. Um, agreement as well as the drive aisle and then a pedestrian walkway between the building and the. Uh, between the drive aisle and the building. So council need to determine whether the setback meets the, um. The intent of the code. The building's orientation is inward on three eighty-five east to private street, not on Washington Boulevard. And there is not a a primary building entrance that runs out on Washington Boulevard. There are three entrances for the three different bays, but they're likely more like service entrances. So. Um, you know, trash service or just to get something out that kind of backside of the building. But not having an entrance, uh, one public entrance on Washington Boulevard is a requirement of the MPC code. And then that east side of the building, those three days don't have fifty percent window coverage. So the size of the windows, as they relate to the overall size of the building. It's a little bit smaller on that east side backside of the building. It's close, but it's just by the map. Uh, per the development agreement, the, um, council will need to review the signage plan. That's another typically administrative. Option, but this is supposed to have a a comprehensive signage plan. I think the developer we could work with, looking at the express car wash and what else is to come in the future could create. Maybe like a signage template for the council to approve, and then we can come in and approve those individual signs, but signage needs to be considered. Um, we just have generic signs on the building right now with approximate sizes. And if the council's okay with those approximate sizes, then we could just fit in whatever tenant, you know, user or tenant is going to go in with that, but that's an item for the council to, uh, determine. There's a missing, if you go back to the site plan, John. The. Let me see the. For the rest of the whole Village of Prominence Point, from this pedestrian walkway across three eighty-five here. All the way south down through the entire project, connecting to the trail system around the lodge and ultimately out Coldwater Creek Trail. Um, is a major east-west connection throughout the site. And that connection walks across this private street and then, um, dies, it terminates right there. So. Staff is recommending per the existing site plan that this pedestrian connection be continued up to Washington Boulevard, where you have. Um, primary bus routes, the ten-foot wide sidewalk and the pedestrian accessibility up here. Um, including kind of getting up and out to other uses, but there's a missing pedestrian sidewalk on the site plan. The each commercial development is has specific requirements on the number of bike racks. I didn't see a bike rack detail on here, but that's an item that we need to add bike racks. And then the number of commercial parking spaces for the site as a whole. Is identified in the development agreement, but it isn't per individual site. We know that parking is constrained in this area. That's another maybe compelling factor for why this building should or shouldn't be sixty-five percent of the width. Of the frontage of this particular lot. Um, but I just want to make a note that as we start to develop these ones and twos, the development pieces that we take into account for commercial. If they run out of room, they're going to have to figure out where in the open space or where somewhere else they're going to put those additional parking stalls. And. I believe that's most everything. There's a note in here from the MPC code about how environment. Um, there's a section L environmental in the MPC code, how they're doing any environmental design features. That could be like. Drainage swales or other, um, you know, supportive of the existing underlying environment. In this particular case, it was kind of pre-developed and developed. You're not. Saving or conserving a whole lot of natural features, at least in this particular area along Washington Boulevard. Um, that can be kind of site-specific, more like what is happening on Coldwater Creek and turning that over into a park space on the trail, but, um. It's just another note that was in the overall as I was, I marched through all of the development pieces in the MPC code. So with that, there's a kind of laundry list of items for you to consider and have to answer in questions. Um, but it's at the council's discretion whether or not the MPC code is spirit code is giving our help and whether it's going to move this whole time.
So Scott, are we looking for an amendment or are we looking for a variance here? Because we amend. The. This particular law, are we? Mending it for all commercial lots there? Would it be individually based upon its its own plan?
It's individually based on development plans, and the way the MPC code is worded is. You have to meet all of these requirements unless there's a development to create it. And if there's a development agreement, then the council has some latitude in its decision-making. So in this particular case, there's a development agreement. So you get to decide based on the uses and the, you know, nature of that use on any of these individual parcels, whether or not they have to meet the. Heart letter of the law. And then that differentiates from what the mayor and planning director's power is in the MPC code to make minor amendments. After the council, say the council were to accept this plan, and then there were an up to five percent amendment on the plan, so that the. Five percent landscaping or five percent building size signage change, whatever it is that's under five percent of a change, then the mayor and I can meet and determine whether or not that is acceptable.
So Councilmember Swanson, you. I think we're here probably on this development agreement, most place. This brings back some memories for me. Back, not out back. I remember this discussion when we, uh, was going to be a seven eleven, but down there. The entrance on the east and the windows and. I think most of us were probably here on that particular discussion, but let me open it up, council, for any questions you may have. From Mr. Hess, I think we have also the developer here this evening. If you have any questions of them, but let's start with Mr. Hess. What questions may you have again, Councilmember Swanson?
Just out of curiosity, which laws?
This is the laws at the corner? It's not the corner. This is the one that's immediately south of the car wash before that.
Before that, that's the private entrance into the developer.
Yep, okay. That's this corner right here. So south is on this.
And to the left of this image is the car wash.
Yep, so the car wash is right here. Oh, that was the other. No, I'm sorry. It's. Trash enclosures cannot be any closer than twenty feet to a property line. This internal property line, it it does separate those commercial parcels. They just kind of develop like four pad sites out there. Um, there's really not a better place to put that garbage enclosure, and it's off of Washington where we wouldn't want it. It is more than twenty feet away from the car wash line here, and. Really, the developer could fix that with a minor lot line adjustment if needed. But that one is is one you should weigh in on, but it's really pretty much the optimal location for that trash enclosure to get a garbage truck in. And deep and out of the site.
Councilmember Alpass? Uh, yeah, two things I thought about, uh. When you mentioned the sidewalk going through, uh, to Washington between the car wash and this proposed site. Um, just a little bit of concern that that sidewalk is sandwiched right in between two drive-throughs, you know, so just a thought. I don't know if there's. Um, maybe the developer could comment on it on the safety of it or the potential of that. And then another thing is, I remember last time when we saw the, uh, sketch of the drive-through. It showed, and and thanks, uh, resident Burns for mentioning mentioning this before the meeting. Uh, there was two drive-throughs. There was two lanes that went through there. And usually I think of those being more efficient and and leading to less clogging up of these lines if it's a popular restaurant. So if that's something that. Uh, the developer could address, that would be great to hear what he has to say about that.
Councilmember Exton, I think you had a comment.
I do. So being in the restaurant business, and I'm assuming this is a restaurant, correct? And as do we actually have a tenant that is?
We haven't.
Okay, is that that's what it looks like to me?
The developer smiles as they do.
Right? So, you know, looking at those lots, I mean, when we were, we were looking at a space to even move our business, right, and looking over there. There is not enough parking, you know, for an establishment of any volume. And especially for the cost of the lots over there, they're going to have to generate a quite a lot of volume. To to even cover the the cost of the facility, right, the land and the, you know, building. And so I think the only way that one can actually. Survive is to have some sort of drive-through. I mean, we, even as big as our parking lot is, we have at least, you know, fifteen employees sometimes over there sucking up lots of parking spaces. And then, you know, and ours is just takeout and delivery. So if we were to actually have. You know, sit-down. Customers, we would need a a tremendous allotment, you know. Number of parking. And as much as I would love, love, love to think that. Um, North Ogden is becoming, going to turn into a bunch of walkers, you know, or we're going to walk everywhere. It's just not. Doesn't seem to be happening. I see that people are still just driving and, um, you know, the the people that could walk to this business. Would be the ones west of Washington, and I think that's just not enough. People to actually support a business, you know, it's like, I don't think anybody else is going to walk there. So, um. I know that it isn't really popular with the residents there to have a drive-through, but I, again, if we want a business to actually come there and succeed. I think it's going to need a a drive-through, and I think the double drive-through is really efficient. It's like if you get them, you know, why going in and then see both. That that seems to work really well. Like, see if Chick-fil-A does it, then it's like, man, that's a pretty good idea. They know how to handle a lot of people. Same with them in and out burger. So if we're going to have something like that, especially, you know, which would be fabulous for tax base. Because, you know, that's a lot of revenue to generate. Um, I think we're going to need to to look at something like this. So very long.
Any other comments? Councilmember Severance, you want to add anything?
No.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I think there were several questions proposed that maybe the developer would like to. Address if you'd like to step up and agree.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you very much. Greg Cronin, uh, with UBA, uh, United Business Lines. Um, the current developer of the property. I want to appreciate Steve Davies pitching for me two weeks ago. I'm sorry I was double booked as a campus and here, but he. So thank you for that, for hearing him out. Um, one thing is, is that, uh, I'm grateful that this is on the DA agreement so that y'all can hear about it. Now just being, it kind of communicates how we're doing. So I'm glad that we do need to come before you each time, each time of site plan. So thank you for having us. So we hope we'll be here often over the next little bit as we get more traffic in the area and we get some tenants, which is what you're asking about. Um, a bike rack, we can incorporate bike rack. That's fine. Um, on the property, we have a patio dining area that's part of this. That'll be a place to put a bike rack there. We anticipate having one just on the. Now they really can come into the building there. Um, and then, uh. Mr. Alpass, you were talking about the pedestrian on the path on the west. Um, the connectivity from the far back of this entire village area to the front. Has been a main theme throughout the whole component. We've connected the expanded green spaces we put in. We've connected those through trail systems. We do hope people walk in their house and walk up and get something to eat or do something up at the front of the restaurant or at the front. And, um, but we do not have any problem continuing that connectivity. Uh, you asked about two drive-throughs. I think that it's relatively safe. You have a sidewalk versus trying to cut across the lots. Which I think if anybody were going to go from there, we do have a connectivity that's at the other end, that's at the main entrance of the properties. So they could go down, go across, and then come up to Washington that way. So there are two pedestrian paths. Um, that could be done. So if it's a request of the council for us to add that particular sidewalk between the drive-through over there. We do have one to the far right, which will be getting you there, just having to walk in front. If you're coming from that side of the development, which is primarily townhomes. Uh, the apartments will all be centered a little bit further over, so they'll be coming up more towards the center if you're walking. So we do have connectivity there, but it's one of those that we would, we definitely accommodate if that's what we need to do. We didn't feel like one there was the best. We figured having the one to the to the south would be better, where people could come across and then walk it that way. But if that's part of the motion tonight, that include the sidewalk, then we'll definitely include the sidewalk. If that helps, uh. The other one was, uh, the, um. There were a couple of variances discussed about, you know, this is a development agreement which turns itself to a planned community concept, so therefore there are variances and differences. From your main code, and that's why it exists. Have a DA agreement, but just to touch on some of the things that were asked. Um, you know, we we've done, uh, what we can. I think on the images that you're showing right here. Um, you can see the front of the building, it's the bottom, the back of the building is the top. Um, I have talked to our designers about, you can take the signage that's on the front. That signage will actually be on the back as well, facing Washington. So it'll actually pick up a different look when you put the signing, that signage over there. And, um, I would encourage y'all to hold us to that if it comes to the signing plan. Just make sure that we are, because good businesses have to have signage, and Washington is their primary signage. So we will have, you know, nice signage on that side of the building, um, to the Washington side. And then, um, talking about the look of the back of the building. Um, we've been working with your in-house team as to how to take that from looking like the back of a building to the front of a building, the second front. And so we've gotten to, we feel like we've got a good look when we put the signage up there and everything. I think with the berm that we've been asked to put in front landscaping. I think there will be a sufficient knowledge of what's there and a nice look, but that's people did come on in and come around. So if there's any thoughts, you can just, we can discuss that a little bit more. Um. Another one was tenant and parking. We talked about that. And, um, we do have a shared parking agreement throughout the complex. There is some parking directly to the. It would be to the west of this. There's a row of parking in front of the, in front of the apartments that are up on the front. Apartments have other parking all back with them as well. So there is some overflow there, and there is a row of across, um. It's going to be a little bit of a walk, but if you go to the, what would be the southwest. When you get past that just main entrance into the community, there's a whole row of parking there. That's that's all committed to the commercial side. As overflow, so it does have a little bit of a walkability. We're not looking at that location for a Chick-fil-A or a. Um, in and out, uh, primarily because the actual parcel size wouldn't even accommodate that. Uh, we're looking at a different type of restaurant that would come in there. You talked about the double lane. Uh, we looked at a double lane. It actually pushed the building back further off Washington. And it created more of that back of a building look, bringing it closer to the street, actually improved it, making less of a large gap of of runway there. Um, the other thing is, is we specifically have putting it on the, putting the draft through to the back. It's allowed us to stack, I believe. The other thing is, is we specifically have putting it on the, putting the drive-through to the back. It's allowed us to stack, I believe. We had an image in the last week's meeting or a couple of weeks that I think we're stacking close to fifteen cars before you actually get back around into the so it's got a long stack aisle all the way around. The perception of the building is it's about three thousand square feet for the entirety. We're only anticipating the drive-through taking up about a thousand to fifteen hundred possibly, half the building. And then there'll be a different tenant for the other half. So it could be two different types of users. It could be a self-lost store. It could be a, you know, an ice cream shop or it could be, you know, we might have a drive-through on one end and another use on the other. We do have some interested tenants. We've got about six of them right now that have asked us and have interest in the province, you know, location. Those are, you know, um, let's see. All of them, but one is something you could eat. If you're looking for some restaurants or something, but we're entertaining just negotiations on timing and LIs. Ever since we, and that's all happened since two weeks ago when the vote was to go ahead and move forward with the drive-through and stuff. We put it out there and made some calls back to some people saying it looks like we're close. And they've kind of got themselves on a short list. So I think we're gonna have some people coming towards your area as we get a chance. So that's the single double. I think I talked about that. The tenant parking, we do know it's gonna be a little tight over there on that particular parcel if it gets really busy for parking, but we're we're expecting a lot to be parked in the drive-through going through, doing things of that nature. And since it's a walkable community, they can park just down half a block and walk to the restaurant. And but a lot of people are willing to do that for certain types of, they'll they'll take a little brief, you know, walk down the street to go to their place. And the landscaping, I think that's all the questions that were asked. Is there anything specific to me that carry out beyond the questions that have been asked?
Just a quick one. Is there any, the parcel to the south? Is there any consideration for what that might be? And the only reason I ask is if this drive-through becomes popular. Adding another drive-through to the parcel next to it just sounds more hectic and more busy. So any thoughts or have you had any ideas?
We've looked at that and the traffic flow and pattern. We we feel like right now we do not have the tentative design for any drive-throughs to the to that end. The seven eleven conversations come up every single meeting I've come to and that corner is a protected corner. As you get to the red light down there. So we're looking to put something a little more, you know, a little larger, a little, you know, more of a corner type of of something there that would be a service.
The term is gateway building.
Gateway, I've heard that multiple times too. I'm still having a hard time getting quite to gateway, but but I'm getting I'm getting closer. I remember gateway being written in the actual comments. It's in your notes. It says gateway. The gateway to North Ogden. So I don't know, but but we're looking for something more prominent there, just to be but the idea of having one other potential drive-through building over there is still, we're just listening to who's calling us and what they're needing. We looked at possibly a bank if they wanted to go there and you get through on one teller line. Possibly they don't do as many as they used to. So it's a single teller right now, more than the three and four they used to do because there's a lot on my banking. So that's changed. Users have changed a lot on that. So but we haven't ruled out there being one additional, but we right now have a site plan already drawn out that does not include any. It is just, it's two other, you know, in fact, three buildings, but they're just three retail buildings. The ones on the corner make an L. So the corner looks more like an L. It's a bigger building. And so you have to come around that one to get anything, but you'll have the vision of of being seeing something more large there with the patio between the two is what we have right now. So we've kind of got a little more of a good look there. Are there any other specific questions that we can take to Scott and we can work on the plan or answer any, are there any feedback or thoughts on how it looks? I mean, I'm open for anything that y'all might want to throw out there. Do you think it's a good look for the area? We kind of put some more expensive features and type of slopes and different things on the building to make it a little more interesting than just a straight building.
I like your positivity about parking and availability. If I was a bed man, I would say those spaces will always be filled.
Well, we're hoping that they're always full. I mean, that means
residential. When you look at the parking in there now, the speed configuration, it is very busy.
Yeah, we'll have to keep on the the HOA enforcement of the parking rules. Okay, before I step down, I just want to let the mayor know, thank you for understanding our situation, meeting with the residents. We do want to have that meeting in that new clubhouse. And I've sent that information to you and I think we're this close to having the CEO over there and we'll get them all in so they can come to their new clubhouse and have a meeting there with us.
So it wouldn't be surprising if the council approved these particular variances or amendments that they would be subject to the timing of having a meeting. That would surprise me.
It would probably surprise me if it wasn't part of the motion. That's been clarified. And what we will do, given the approvals tonight, we would just simply move the plans forward to your building committee, building group to start doing the fine MFPs, all the details over the next couple of weeks, the stuff that's not, and then maybe site prep. But we would not plan on being able to have a permit to go vertical or build this until that meeting has been had.
Okay, what other questions may you have, Council? Greg Williams here. I don't see any at this point in time.
Let me know if there is. I'll be right here.
Council, I think what we'd be looking for here is a amendment to the development agreement. What are we looking for here, Scott? You give site plan approval, though don't we have to make a motion to all these exceptions like length of building, CD side, not enough glass, all those things?
Yeah, it would be if you if you want to accept it as proposed, you could do approval of the site plan as presented and that moves it forward or it's approval of the site plan with these items, not the things with. So if you want, if you want to deviate from staff's recommendations, staff's recommendation is to essentially accept it as it is with those minor things like pedestrian improvement and leaving the garbage where it's at, the building size is okay. No primary entrances on the east side and the amount of glass on the east side of the building.
Let me ask this question, John, then, since he's the official legal situation. The development agreement now prohibits the things that Scott.
So
It says it has to be this long. It has to have the east side entrance. It has to have glass. Certain percentage, all those things.
So the way Scott said it is correct is that the MPC zone says you have to have these things. And then our development agreement says all the commercial development has to be approved by the council. And so in that interpretation, there is the room for the council to say that essentially by approving the commercial development agreement that those exceptions are granted under the development agreement.
So by approving the site plan as presented here?
Yes.
That's the motion would be to approve the site plan?
Yes.
As presented. And council, I think you saw the packet over the variances you'd be council members wants.
And and John, just for further clarification, this would apply to this pad only.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah, so every commercial pad will come to the council for approval.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, the fellers just asked for, I think it's a recommendation in my staff report for that pedestrian connectivity between the car wash and the building. So just looking for clarity, is that a requirement or not a requirement for that pedestrian connection to go through and that's
Well, I think you made some recommendations in there, right? So if they approve your site plan recommendation as presented, it would just have that in there because I think you have the sidewalk, right?
Right.
So if it's adopted as presented, that would cover it. They don't want it in there, they'd have to exclude that from your presentation. So but if they just approve that as is. Yeah, probably recommendation, right?
Yeah. The clarity the clarity was we're absolutely willing to put it there. If it could be approved site plan per recommendations with the sidewalk being determined by staff. Maybe let them hear more of what we have to say, determine if that needs to be there or not. Just something that leave, because if you say it, we have to put it in, like there's not any variation at this point.
That could be the five percent approval between Scott.
If if that's included there, then that works for me. Just just wanted to have that clarified as all, as long as y'all approve that, you're within staff discretion, then that works for that particular item. Thank you.
Okay, council, let me ask if there is a motion. Councilmember Swanson.
Mayor, we approve the site plan as discussed. Beaming up the staff, the decision on this side.
Okay, into the five percent approval. We have a motion. We have a second to that motion.
And pending the meeting with the residents. I had that written down.
Good catch, good catch. Second to that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be a rule call vote, as previously stated. Let's start with you, council.
Yes.
Councilmember Swanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowpas?
Yes.
Councilmember Severin?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Item number six on our agenda. This is the discussion on the plan for Barker Park property. Mr. Call, I believe that you will be leading this discussion as our city manager and attorney. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, so go forward.
Okay, so council, as you know, the the folks that have been involved in the volunteer effort over at Barker Park have been doing lots of work and a few questions have come up on things. And the last time we presented this to you. The instruction was given for anything that occurs in there to be approved by myself, councilman Barker and the Parks and Rec director. So we don't have a current Parks and Rec director. And then there's been a little friction between staff and some of the folks on the appropriate procedure for some things. And so we just wanted to have a little clarification so we can have a good path forward because that group's doing some really good things. And to uphold the original Grassley Plan, which was actually the second plan proposed for this area. And so you can see, Scott, do you have the? You can see this is the, this was the plan that was drawn in two thousand and two and this is the the amphitheater bowl as designed and construction constructed. I think it was constructed two thousand and three. And then there wasn't anything done up here on the island as it's known. And then this is the area the Build Barker Park Committee has provided that additional detail that was in your packet or in that was shown this morning or just a few minutes ago, well, an hour ago, whatever. It's been shown tonight. But you can see there's some additional detail in here. And I think to to Grant's point, I don't see this as a conflict between the two plans. However, I'm not sure that there's clear enough direction from the council to staff to do things like add a pickleball court in this area or do things. And what I'm trying to do is be sensitive to the members of the committee who in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen and sixteen, you know, were meeting monthly and talking about options and going through things. And I just want to make sure that we're headed in the right direction, meaning that everyone's on the same page and that we're moving forward. Some of the stuff that we're dealing with is we've got, you know, we're gonna be putting a bridge in down here to cross the creek. But the city engineer, because of the location of the bridge, says we need to get a stream alteration permit. So I know it seems silly. It's just the way that the Army Corps of Engineer works. And if the city sponsoring that as a project, which is originally what me and councilman Severin talked about, then it's a, it's an easier process and the cheaper process. It's a five hundred dollar permit instead of a thirty or forty thousand dollar permit. And so I think that there's some things that we really need to work on together. And I just want to make sure we're all headed in the right direction. Because I don't see I don't see the direction the group is heading as wrong or in violation, but at the same time, I haven't talked to the members of the Barker Park Committee, the original design committee. And that plan was presented in two thousand and sixteen with all the costs as the final kind of presentation. And the council said, well, hey, we'll, we'll talk about this again. And then every conversation about that just focused on what was going on on the southern portion in the amphitheater area. And we've never circled back to what happens north of the hollow or, you know, in out the island. And so I just, I want to make sure we're we're working, we're heading in a good direction. And as you can see, there's been a lot of thought put into this plan with the, I'm gonna zoom in. I know you've got in front of you, but not everyone does. But, you know, you can see the gardens. You can see some some detail about grassy areas. There's a Bowery and restrooms. And we just, just want to make sure that we don't end up in a point where we cause too much frustration to that group or to residents, the members of the committee. I'm just trying to do a, let's circle the wagons really quick. And we are talking about maybe some wagons over here, right? So but I just want to kind of get a feel for the room and see what the council's thinking. The the concept that was last presented to the council, as I believe the official recommendation from the committee is this one that's on the website. And as you can see here, there's a learning amphitheater and on the other plan that was presented. I zoomed into far. There's a learning amphitheater. And so there's all these little, there's so many similarities that I feel like we're heading in the right direction. I just don't want to get so far ahead that someone raises a red flag and we've started turning dirt over. But so I'm just, I'm trying to put a bow on the end of this and make sure that we're 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 kosher. Mayor?
I could ask just a couple of questions to clarify. So really, is there one approved plan the council approved?
So the last plan that was voted on by the council was the two thousand and two Grassley Plan. Which is this one.
Got it. So what does the, because I want to comply with the agreement that we have in all aspects, because I think that's been frankly, a sore spot in some cases. So I want to make sure we comply with the agreement. What does the agreement require? Does it require the council to approve a plan?
No, not necessarily.
What does the agreement require?
So the agreement has certain restrictions on what can be done on the ground and the most prominent of which that's brought up all the time is no organized sports. So it's not a soccer field. It's not a baseball field or a football field. There were iterations that showed a crossfield here, but those were not in the final recommendation.
And John, on the plan, the twenty sixteen plan, did it say or the twenty?
Twenty fifteen, sixteen, yeah.
I believe there was a cost estimate put together on that.
Correct.
Which was double-digit millions, I think.
It was seven million dollars and we estimate now it would be double digits.
So I guess I'm thinking in my mind, if this is the plan presented by the committee and it's a fourteen million dollar bill and the council want to know that if they're going to say this is the plan we're going to develop. The other question I have is I, and I think this was brought up before, is once development of this area starts then the property no longer is available for lease. I think we had that discussion on an issue before.
Correct.
So I want the council to understand, is this the start of development of the park? And does that then trigger that provision? But the key thing is I want to make sure we're complying with. I know that that's open for interpretation because the agreement was pretty loosely written in some cases. So I would appreciate your feedback on those issues. I understand the council does not have to approve a plan. But you have to approve expenditures if it's city money, right?
Correct.
But according to this, the council doesn't have to approve a plan for that.
Right.
It is. It's the two thousand and two plan, right? Because that's all that's been proved.
Well, and that's, that's, that is, that's part of the reason I'm bringing it is I, if we, if we jump all the way back to the two thousand and two plan, then we don't have any plan for anything north of the hollow. So the, as as Grant mentioned, So the, as as Grant mentioned, there was an area for a little pioneer walk. The current Grassley Plan just shows a sidewalk in this little area right here. And I and I'm so if, so this is the, this is why I just want to, I want to find a path forward. And I I don't expect the council to have a a vote tonight. I'm really hoping to just say, okay, what direction? Do we want to go to a formal committee? Do we want to just focus on the two plans and building them together? I just, I just want to kind of have some direction so that we can.
How do we unwind? The question I have is if the council approved that plan as the plan for that park, what do we need to do to unwind it if that's not the plan? Because my understanding is that's the approved plan by the council. But then I'm hearing you say that the council really didn't have to have a plan. So legally, where are we if if the council approved that plan?
Well, so if, then what what we're left with, if if that's the last word from the council, then everything that was done in two thousand fourteen, fifteen and sixteen was for naught. And so what I'm trying to do is finish that process that was started in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, because I think the goal was to come with a new official plan, which was then approved by the council, even though the council isn't technically required by any code in the city to approve a plan.
But we do approve the plan for all of our parks, basically.
I mean, by approving the budget, then, yeah.
Councilmember Swanson.
I love the marrying of the two plans. I really like what you guys come up with. I mean, obviously, the the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, you know, hopefully a billionaire will roll in one day and decide he's going to build the park, he or she. I haven't gotten him to come yet. So it's probably not going to happen. I really like that. Peggy, you and I had talked years ago about down behind the current amphitheater, you know, doing a Peggy's Walkway or something so that you could plant all of your natural plants and have signs and stuff. And I think this is a great, a great way for that to be accomplished. My only concern is that this is a city-owned piece of property. And we would not give any private group, art blocks, to do whatever they wanted to because it was private funding on any piece of private prop of public property. And so I think we need to formalize the committee because it being property that the residents paid for, they have a right to know the discussions that are going on and the plans that are being made. And I think I don't necessarily think that council needs, I think, if we have, you know, our parks experts that are in public works. John, you and Mayor being involved, maybe a council member, I would say suggest council member Barker, he's over parks, right? Working with the committee, but I think the committee should be formalized so that there's records kept and and residents have a accounting of what's going on with the land that they own, that they paid for and that they own. I don't see any problems with what's being proposed. I think it's awesome. I would suggest maybe council consider amending if if it's agreeable, you know, to the parties of the original agreement, that that this be a considerate, considering be considered, it's been a long day, be considered only the beginning of the development for the the island. So that the northern piece can continue to be leased until we're ready to actually do something with that. And it can continue to be in agriculture and farmed and all of that. I'd hate to see that sit and just go fallow.
I think that's important to clarify that because is to read the agreement.
Yeah.
Exactly. What triggers that?
Yeah.
I think it is wise not to trigger it.
And I think, well, I think we can separate it and say for the island, it's triggered, we're developing, so that portion no longer is going to be farmed, but the north of the hollow, that the larger section.
As you'll recall, there's another piece.
Right.
Across the street.
That's right. That's right. So yeah, so I think we have to limit that, the the trigger to that small portion that's being done, that which is, and I think that will require council approval. Formalize the committee and and move forward.
So could I, oh, council member.
I just, I just had to, I think this looks absolutely lovely. I think this is really awesome. I I do really like speaking to council member. Swanson. I know it was like council member Phil. I I really like the idea of, you know, formalizing the committee number one. And then and and that all of the meetings and everything are publicly held and recorded and everything so that there's just that we don't end up with unfulfilled expectations because that those end up being really problematic. So the other thing that I I really like the idea of, I mean, we've got this section now, this island section. But I I think we should even subdivide the rest of it even more, you know, that this this is another phase, this is another phase. And and so it's it's completed in phases. And then it doesn't seem like this fourteen million dollar, ah, you know, once we start, we're we're, ah, you know, you've got to bite off the whole thing that we kind of divided off into more digestible pieces, I guess. And that each of the triggers to, you know, say that this is, this is now under development and no longer will be used for agriculture. That that seems like a good approach. Have anybody? Yes?
Good point. So if I could summarize that, if I see no other comments from council, I believe this is the process. So correct me if I'm wrong. I do believe that the committee probably is need to be formalized. Whatever we need them to do, that approval of two thousand and two, Plan John, tell us what that is. But I think this is the process we go through. Formalize the committee, requires public meetings, et cetera. Because I do believe at some point in time the city is going to have to step up to meet the commitment they made at the time of purchase of this property. How we do that is going to be very interesting, you know, how we fund that. Maybe it is phases, maybe I'm sure somebody will come up with an idea on that. But the process, I understand, is the mayor suggests to the council committee members. And then the council approves that. Is that correct, John?
Correct, yep.
So I would, I I guess the motion would be to formalize a committee as stated by council member, extra council member Swanson. That then the mayor makes recommendations to the council for that that committee and shortly consult with the appropriate people in doing so. I'm just not going to draw names out of a hat or anything. We'll we'll shortly talk to the stakeholders in this and then come back to the council for approval. Does that sound fair?
And and we can do all that at a future meeting, the official motion and everything.
Yeah, once again, we need to do that. So do we need a motion to that effect, John? The was that already something that's in the fact that we could do as a normal process, the council?
Well, so it's not on our agenda tonight as a as a decision, the and so to do actually form the committee. So what we'll do is come back next time with the names and the official motion and do it just.
Right. I'm just reading my shell here, John, and it says council member motion to approve the plan for Barker Park property. I'm just looking at the agenda here. So do we need to postpone that agenda item?
Right, because we're not approving the plan, yeah.
Yeah, I'll move to postpone the agenda item to a future soon where we can formalize the committee, approve the names and the procedures and all that kind of good stuff.
Okay, so we have a motion to postpone item number six. We have a second to that motion.
Second.
A motion and second and any further discussion? Oh, in favor of postponing item number six on our agenda this evening, please say aye.
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 Are there any polls? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Do we need any other motions, John, this evening? Okay, we'll move on then to item number seven. I guess it'll be the presenter is Bryce Nelson, our administrative services manager, our treasurer, and he's going to talk to us.
Council. So as may some of you may remember, last year we started investments in some T bills, treasury bills with some of the money that we have in our PTIF. What I'd like to do today is you know, move forward and take the next step in our investment and start some investments in some longer term things, create a sort of a five-year plan. I've met with Morton Investments, Solstice Investments, and and me and Mayor met with Meter Investments. And then I was really impressed with Meter, and I think that's the, and I have the Ben Saye here with Meter also. So if you have any questions, he can help us. But what I'd like to do is I'd like to move forward with that process, investing those funds. These would be funds that maybe we have commitments for, but it's out, you know, a little longer than the the next five years or so. And yeah, so that's where we're at. So what, you guys have any questions?
So Bryce, are you looking for approval of the investment tonight?
Uh, we don't, technically, we don't need approval. I just more so want to let everyone know, in our, within our purchasing policy, you know, there wouldn't be enough funds made by Meter Investment to go to RFP. I have quotes from other investment firms. The term of contract, so obviously with our investments, if we do this, it sort of develop a five-year ladder. If the month, the contract with Meter would be month to month, if at any point in time we decide that Meter is not keeping their end, we would take you know, we would step up and be the holder for those. We could also pass it up to another financial firm. The funds would be held in a third-party bank that's not, you know, Meter doesn't have, they'd still be our funds. We wouldn't be locked in with Meter for the five years. It's a month to month that we feel like they're not holding up their end of the agreement. We can either do it ourselves, move with another investment firm. So there's not really any approval. I just more so just want to, I guess, hear your guys' thoughts, make sure you know, obviously, I don't want to say that I've thought of everything. So especially, you know, you guys have some great insights and feedbacks into this type of thing. So I just want to make sure.
Councilmember Swanson.
For those in the audience that don't know, please tell them what PTIF is.
So the PTIF is the Public Treasury Fund.
Investment.
Investment fund, there we go. So it's a fund that it we sort of use it as our savings. We put it there, the state invests that money. It it's very, has a high liquidity. We can withdraw money out of it relatively quickly. We get a higher yield than you know, traditional checking account. And so we try and keep most of our money there. And the the point of the investments would be to lock the money in for a little bit longer term, for a better investment, a better, a better yield for the money on that, that that we don't quite have a short-term commitment for, that we, you know, the money is committed places, just not for, you know, within the next couple of years. And so I feel like we have a obligation to, you know, maximize our efforts on that money. And I I think we have an opportunity to do so, especially right now with the the interest rates, the way that they are, it's a great time to to kind of get into that and move that way. And as, you know, as we saw, I think in our last audit committee meeting, our interest rates were up, were at two hundred percent or something for last year. And so I think there's a ability to to even capture more yield.
You mentioned that the funds are fairly liquid. Is there a penalty for early withdrawal if we find ourselves in an emergency or something and we need we feel the need to tap into the sponsors or kind of before.
So there's not a penalty for early withdrawal. Well, what you have to do is you would have to sell this, the bond for the market rate. So there would be a loss in funds, you know, the obviously, it's not going to be what it would be worth if you held it to maturity. And that's, you know, I I don't think we have it in our policy. And I'd like to maybe get it in there that we do hold things maturity. And you know, what that would mean is a little more planning on everybody's and making sure. And these these funds will, you know, mature at varying rates. So within, you know, within a year's time, we'll have two or three different things maturing in that year. So so long as we, you know, have enough foresight to know what's what's happening, we can just not reinvest those funds and make sure we have them available for the needs of us. But there is always the option to sell early. You will it it will not, you know, you probably won't make back what you put into it if you, and even if you held it to maturity. But there is the option to always sell if we do find the need that we have.
Councilmember Swanson, those are all good questions. This will require basically a pretty thorough cash flow analysis with a particular reserve for those types of non-identified emergencies. There is one thing that I I think we need to get an opinion on, Jamie ultimately is, you know, there's this new provision, it's called mark to market. So even if you don't sell those in a given year, if the market changes on you and the value of those decrease, you may be faced with running that through the current year, even though you haven't taken a realized loss. So we'd have to be, you know, make sure we get an opinion on that because I think the last thing any of us would want is a surprise on what our financial statements look like if Jamie, did you have a chance? I know we had that discussion. Did you have a chance to look into that?
Well, so I'm looking at everything. So basically tomorrow, if everything can do with all of our capital projects and just looking at fiscal year twenty four with our cash flow, I would say I think that the city would be comfortable in investing anywhere between five to seven million. I would heavily want to look at that cash flow analysis because we have to budget year to year. And so we don't know what what projects are for fiscal year twenty five. And so we, I would feel comfortable with five to seven million. However, I don't know if the terms would be more than one year for those, excuse me, those comments, what Mary just said, you know, mark to market, you got to take that into consideration and then just cash flow.
Just as a reminder, once again, in our planning process on capital projects, we have to identify those out. We can't just have the money sitting there. We know we have pretty significant commitments. So even though we say we can invest, I would just remind the council that, you know, by law, the maximum we can have in our general fund balance is thirty-five percent of revenues.
Correct.
We're at about twenty-two, thirty.
About twenty-four.
Twenty-four percent right now. So that two point five million is is an amount there that's kind of the rainy day fund. I'm with you, council member Swanson. You don't want to invest every last dime or spend every last dime. We we learned that this year, right, with some surprises that we had. So I think if it's going to entail a cash flow analysis, I think the other thing is Bryce and myself have the discussion, I think Jamie would concur, this one with John, is this would have to concur with our investment policy, which has been approved by this body. So I think what we're looking for tonight, and I did sit in on this presentation, was was impressed with the reporting and the options you know, we have. Still a few unanswered questions, but my mind, we're looking kind of to get Bryce's approval to move forward with this investment.
Just wanted to comment, I think it would be helpful for council to have, and we're we're talking kind of in the ether of these long-range projects that we have. Right? I I don't think there's any of us that could just pull them right off the top of our head and say, these are the projects. It'd be helpful if council had that list and the anticipated costs that are associated with that list so that we can look at that and say, okay, we've got that tank, we've got that pond, we've got this going, we've got that going, and guesstimate years of when we'll be tackling those projects. It'll be helpful for the public as well to know that when we're talking about, we've got these projects, right, that are planned out down the road, that the residents can look at that list and go, oh, okay, well, they're doing that, and this, and this, and this, and this. And wow, that's a lot of money that's committed to get these projects done. And, you know, we have money sitting in the bank, but it's committed. wow, that's a lot of money that's committed to get these projects done. And, you know, we have money sitting in the bank, but it's committed to do these things. And until they're done, we're going to invest it, turn it a little bit.
We'd be very happy to know that we're, we're pretty well down the we wrote on that list. Not only with the general fund, but we're looking at water projects that have to be completed out so that we can't start accumulating the funds for those. You know, future parks, those type of things. So we're getting, we're getting pretty, yeah, we're getting pretty close. It's not totally completed, but yes, we are looking down the road on that. And I think it would be a good idea ultimately to to bring that. I, I know we've had some public discussion on that, but.
I think it'd be a good presentation. I don't know what's going to.
You know, because there are a lot of commitments out there. There are. Councilmember Exstrom?
Yes, I did. So I was just thinking about that project plan. And I think we have discussed the naming of all of those projects. Are we going to give John executive decision-making on what they're all called?
So in that last meeting, we said that department heads would.
Would choose them.
Would choose names.
Good. I couldn't remember what we, we just, I didn't say that we, you know, I thought your names were actually very good. The other question is, you know, I, I do understand that there are only certain types of investments and only certain firms that are allowed to even invest municipal funds. What investment products are available? Is it just bonds or is that?
Uh, so you can do, there, there are, you are limited to your options. There are quite a few different things. There's the, the T bills. Uh, there are bonds. There, there are a few different things. They do have to be approved by the state. Um, and that's what Meter is. Meter's approved broker also, so they can help us with those approved things that are approved. You know, they can help us and guide us through that. And that's why, that's sort of why I haven't tried to do this on my own. Just because there's people that know a lot more than me and I prefer help.
I think the important thing is, to Bryce, you might want to share with the group, is the experience they have working with other municipalities. They have a
That was my other question. Is, all right.
Yeah, we'll come chat a little bit like.
Yeah, come on up.
Well, Ben, give an introduction. He's, he's worked in quite a few different cities and his.
Maybe this is a little background.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, thank you for your time.
I thank you so much. Um, yeah, so Ben's staying here with Meter Public Funds. Uh, we've been in business since 1974 and then working with public entities since 1990. Uh, currently, 370 public entities throughout the US. Uh, we manage about 48 billion in taxpayer dollars. And then we advise on a couple pools as well. Um, I've been working here with Utah government cash for the last decade and have worked with probably 150 different government entities, quite a few cities like yourself. You know, growing population kind of built out, where your funds have doubled over the last seven years or so. And so your financial situation has become a little bit more complex. Uh, the way that we work with the PTIF is part of your holistic strategy. You know, so, so the PTIF is a great liquidity pool. Uh, right now, elevated interest rates. You know, it's extremely attractive. Uh, what we're trying to do with the city, and you mentioned cash flows, is we do a cash flow analysis. Uh, we figure out what needs to be liquid. Uh, you don't want to overpay for liquidity over time because you lose interest income. Uh, so with your cash flow analysis, uh, we figure out your liquidity profile and then what we, and then what we can invest a little bit longer term. That gives us an advantage over time, not, not only from a principal protection of emphasis and the code that Bryce was referring to is 51711, Utah Money Management Act. And then we're an approved advisor on the Certified Investment Advisors list. And then one other thing I wanted to mention, so we're a SEC-registered investment advisor and we're, we're at the Disher, it works on a fixed fee. So when we purchase bonds and we're structuring your strategy and your portfolio, we have to buy the bonds at best price. Um, to answer your question, we cannot invest in equities. Uh, that would be against the Utah Money Management Act. The Utah Money Management Act is written very conservatively. Uh, so the investment types are treasuries, agencies, brokered CDs, up to 97%, uh, high-grade corporate bonds, you know, so it's those types of instruments. And then we structure your investment portfolio, customized for your city's financial situation. Um, with your ongoing liquidity needs, uh, that's where the conversations come into play with Brex. Uh, we meet on a quarterly basis. And then with some cities, we even do a monthly cash flow call. Uh, so with your future projects that are coming up, or you may have cash outflows, we'll either recommend keeping those funds in the pool or if we find it advantageous, uh, to invest further out, uh, we will structure it where you'll have liquidity, um, when you need it for the outflows. With selling a security, um, if we don't get our cash flow corrections correct, or excuse me, our cash flow, um, analysis correct, and if something comes up, you know, you have like a, you know, like an earthquake or something, or a flood, you know, you need to spend money. I've never seen a spending schedule where you need to spend money tomorrow. Um, but with that in mind, if you do need to sell a security, you know, the market will wait a little bit. Um, generally, you're going to have bonds in there that'll be priced at gains, uh, that we can sell. Um, in the worst-case scenario, you could have an unreal, or a realized loss. Uh, that's extremely rare, though, uh, with the cash flow, you know, analysis that goes into play. Um, second, with the mark-to-market, uh, so on a yearly basis, you would actually mark your portfolio to market, and that's just the market value. My clients, what they're focused down, in on, is their yield income, uh, so the net interest income over time. And so that's what we report on. Uh, the mark-to-market can go both ways. When rates go down, it looks like you have a big unrealized gain, right? When rates go up, it looks like you have a big unrealized loss. So you want to make sure you don't pay too close of attention to that. And then as bonds roll down the curve and they get closer to maturity, they get closer to their par value, you know? So that's something that we educate on. Uh, the last thing, I think, I think I covered all the questions. Let's see here. Yeah. And then, and then as far as my background, yeah, um, in Utah, gosh, I've worked with over 70 public entities, you know, in the state. I try not to admit that I've dedicated most of my career, you know, the part, part with, you know, the public entities, and that's what I've done. So, um, yeah, I wanted to open it up for questions, you know, but just wanted to give you a little background. You know, who we are, so.
Any questions?
Pretty excited. We, we were able to get the, the bond for a public safety building at rock bottom and then interest rates went. And so we've actually been, you know, making a considerable amount of money on the, the proceeds that we got from the bonds, um, that we borrowed, that we then invested.
Oh, nice. Yeah.
So, yeah, it's like, I'd much rather have it be invested in something that's earning a return than, you know, just sitting there. So, yeah, especially with interest rates is the way they are, so.
Call it interest rates, we wouldn't be sitting here, right?
Right.
Right, yeah.
You know, we, like a lot of bond traders have, uh, they bet the rates would be going down by now, right?
Uh, yeah.
It's hard to imagine a lot much further.
Yeah, I mean, we're, um, with the inflation numbers coming in last week, you know, maybe one more hike this year. You know, it's kind of a 50-50 shot. Uh, next year, you know, the Fed changed their prediction and their forecast, uh, from four cuts to cuts, you know? So inflation's a little stickier than we thought, but, you know, that's why, um, you know, we're always looking at, we're always changing our models. And then our objective is to get your portfolio balanced, um, where it's going to perform well on any type of market, you know? So right now, with most of your funds being PTIF, you're very short. Uh, so what that means, if rates do go down, you'll go right down with it and then your net interest income will kind of go down with it. So I'm not sure if any of you are hearing in 2008. I don't know if any of you remember that. Okay. We went from 5% overnight rates, you know, to 0.5 within a year. You know, so cities that were making half a million on 10 million in '08, we're down to about 50,000 in '09, you know? So we're trying to prevent that from happening, you know, with our clients. And so, you know, that's why we take duration at times where we feel like rates are elevated. Uh, we want to lock in a portion of your funds, three to five years out at over 4.5%. So if rates do go down, you know, you can still utilize those funds for budget, you're still maintaining your net interest income. And then the process is just ongoing, you know? So if rates are going to go up, we'll pivot, you know? You know, so there's a lot of strategy in place with it, so.
And I would just, yeah, council, I'm sure you're aware of this, but one of the reasons we were able to take a minimal property tax increase this year is because of a substantial increase in interest income. I did have a discussion with Ben. I challenged him to explain this to the citizen about, you know, mark-to-market, it's really not a loss, even though it shows that our so I did challenge you to that.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not harder than trying to explain to our CPA mayor that debts don't equal credits in government accounting.
Any questions for Ben? Any questions? Ben, thank you.
Okay.
I guess you've got what you need there, Bryce, to move forward. Yeah, we won't need to have a motion on that as it will move on, man.
Bryce personally guaranteed.
And I would just, you know, make this, this comment. And, you know, we all, we have a financial liaison. And I think it's important to make sure that he's, or she, whoever, every two, couple of years we change, but that they are involved in this process, to Bryce, that we keep them in the loop. On the two.
Yeah, Bryce and I met earlier.
Yeah. So Bryce has been educating me, right, Bryce? Oh, thanks.
Don't make all that.
All right, we're going to move on to item number nine on our agenda this evening, and we're going to have a few reports. I would like to defer, um, Councilmember Barker's comments, as he's not here. I think on the 10th of October, we will be having a report uh, from the Cherry Days Group, which is part of his assignment on finances and some evaluation on the survey, maybe some discussion on how things will go in the future. So we'll defer his reporting until then. So why don't we go with you, Councilmember Exstrom, uh, if you have anything to report on Public Works? We'll then move on to Councilmember Severing to see what he'd like to report. Uh, police, public safety, and then we'll go to Councilmember Swanson, any information you have on finance, Councilmember Exstrom.
Okay, very good. Public Works is, of course, hard at work. They are putting up the walls on the new reservoir, so that work, that water project is coming along. Being a little bit more public engagement, if everybody wanting to know what it is. Um, we have almost completed the, it's like, they've almost completed the trailhead parking lot about two weeks, but had it scheduled, which is always nice. And all of the pipe for the 1700 North Stormwater Project has been purchased. So that's kind of what's going on.
Councilmember Swanson, uh, do you have any update on, I think it's getting fairly cold fairly quickly. And we made a commitment, we would take care of those culverts over on, on those driveways on 1700. I believe, do you have a comment on that? If not, I had discussions today the other day. It is still our intention to get those done here quickly. And I, I know Brian's not here, but I think John also will be starting on the striping and the sidewalk ADA ramp over at the, at the grip part.
Correct.
You're sending to, so that culvert typing an estimated EPA.
So it will be here before the, the date will be closed, so in the next couple of weeks.
All right, thank you for that report, Councilmember Exstrom. Uh, Councilmember Severing, is there anything you'd like to report on public safety this evening?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. The chief wanted me just to remind the citizens, uh, well, not necessarily remind, but wanted to thank the citizens. Apparently, this last summer, we actually had a decline in deaths of burglars from the previous year. So that was awesome. He reminds us to make sure that we're just keeping an eye, as we're out driving through, keeping an eye on kids heading to school. And last but not least, a quick update on the public safety building. Uh, plumbing, electrical, and bleach back installation is about done. Drywall has started and asphalt should be going down the parking lot in the next few weeks. So we're moving forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Swanson?
Pull up the sales tax slide. There we go. Council, if you'll look at mine item, March, July, there, you'll see that our budget for this year, we budgeted 333,400 for sales tax. Sales taxes came in at 341,47, excuse me, 346,764, which is just a scotch, as my mom would say, above 341,47 from last year. So while we are, you know, 40% above budget, we are only, you can see only a 1% increase uh, over prior year's collections, which continues that flat trend line that we've been seeing over the last multiple months now in our sales tax. And so we'll continue to keep an eye on that to see how things are going with sales tax. Um, we are through the month of August. We don't have, uh, August sales tax numbers in yet, but through August, for 17% of the year has elapsed. General fund revenues are in at 8%, um, due in part because no August sales tax have been reported. And our property tax revenue will come in in December. General fund expenditures are at 17.2% and every year we have that momentary hard skip when revenues are at 8%, expenditures are at 17%. But remember, we have the insurance expense that's paid in full upfront every year. And then that, uh, that levels itself off as we go through the year. Utility funds are on budget at 17%. Casey Hunsaker is now in the Finance Department. It's come over from Public Works. He's working to transfer the uh, the prior sewer mining projects that we had done. Uh, they're, uh, sitting in the capital projects in progress place over to the, where they should be in the depreciation, so that they're being appreciated as appropriate. And then they should, when those projects are finished, they should sit in that in-progress file as long as they have in the past. He's also working on a five-to-10-year plan for our capital projects in both water and sewer funds. Okay, and that my phone just did something really weird. Um, and we are in progress for preparing for our annual audit. So that's where we are with finance. Everything, everything is good with a cautious eye on sales tax.
Which I think is wise. I had the opportunity to be with the legislature the other day, and he looked at several other legislators and said, I wish you luck in balancing the budget this year. I believe on the report I saw a sales tax, this time last year was 94 million. And it dropped to 72 million in the state. So it's evident that the things are settling down a bit. Hopefully that trend of natural light nature doesn't continue too much, but I think the state is, uh, expecting things to go down. Thank you for those reports. Um, now have item number nine, for any further public comments this evening. That would be the time to, uh, step up to the podium and give us your, your name. Chris Polver Northogden, just a shout out to John calling Dave about Polver's constant pestering. But anyways, just a couple of things I saw tonight, I guess I was pleased when you started talking about something about projects and something looking forward-looking. I would challenge us to also expand that to police and other programs that are expanding as well, expenses, and also just make a stab at revenue for that same time, that would show us any gaps that we would have. And then if there's any commercial that we can kind of point at. Anyway, one thing was leaf truck. I know that's common, but I just hadn't heard if that was something that's going to be like it was normally or on the garbage day, if that's even been a thought from anybody.
on the garbage day, if that's even been a thought from anybody.
Dave?
Yes.
The big truck will be out.
It will be out.
Okay, but should I tell people on garbage days or just, because we're not doing the call thing anywhere, right?
We're gonna follow the old garbage route.
Okay. That makes sense. Okay, and then I guess the only one, we didn't, we talked about, uh, investment stuff, but nobody really talked about fees, and I kind of looked at it. And it's, it's a standard fee, he said, but I guess the one thing we never, I didn't hear the percentage or amount. I knew it was based on how much you invested overall, I thought.
We estimated what, of eight thousand dollars a year, Bryce?
Yeah, about that.
Pretty minimal.
Yeah, okay, and that's what I thought it was, I just wanted to make sure. And then, um, I think that was it. Yeah, appreciate it, thanks.
Yeah, possibly just quick, appreciate the council's warm reception to the hours and hours worth they've gone into this project. We'll have to make some changes on the grassland, because it came in time when we weren't aware we were in such a drought. Uh, and so we're having to change some of the plants and so on there to be more water-wise, more water-wise, um, irrigation system than was that one. Thanks again for the warm reception. You went online, John?
No raised hands.
Christina Watson, Northoggin, I just had a few questions, um. Maybe this is obvious to all of you, and I just don't know, but, um, as far as the fences on leased property, is a leased property something that public can enter and use while it's being leased? Or is that, um, like the part of Barker Park that's being harvested? We wouldn't want random citizens running through and playing in that, right? I mean, just curious about. Is leased property something that, you know, like a renter, um, wouldn't be letting the landlord in their home all the time? Um, whenever they felt like it, it would be organized. Anyway, just curious about that, um. It's already been approved, so it doesn't really matter, but, um, then the parking lot overflow at Providence Point with the drive-through, um, I'm concerned that the overflow parking lot will appear to be parking that's only available for the residents. And so public who come in who don't live there won't realize that there is available overflow. So I wonder if there's some way that we can put, um, signage or a label that, um, or make it um, really open and welcoming the way that it flows, uh, just so that that's obvious. Um, it would be unfortunate if, uh, citizens are turned away because there's not a place to accommodate them. And then as far as the Barker Park Committee goes, um, I love the work that's being done. And as this is a long-term project, because of the, um, dollar sign next to it, for one point, but as this is over many years, um, progressing, we would hate, I would hate for their, um, progression to be halted just because they have to get, um, an approval, a plan approval every time, they need a new bridge or a new sidewalk. So I wonder if there's a way where it can be like five percent, just chat with the mayor over it kind of thing. Or maybe formalizing committee means that they can continue to make, um, progress every time they meet and decide something else to, um, I, as a random citizen, I guess all I'm saying is I would be concerned with how public lands are used if it's with public money that's being used. But if they're finding donors to improve upon lands, um, then, then why should we stop that or hold them back?
I can answer that question for you, Christina. Because council is responsible for the use of city property. And if that turns out bad, guessing it's not the committee that come right here to this.
Right.
This group. So even though the funds that are raised, uh, we have an obligation to make sure everything complies. It's just like with the bridge, right? If it changes the stream flow, then it has to be approved. So I think it's important. You don't micromanage it, but we get enough plan, phase one, phase two, phase three, whatever the phasing is, that can be approved, and then they move forward.
Right.
That, because, yeah, we don't, you know, we don't want overreach, but we do have that obligation. I think it's Councilmember Swanson indicated.
We want it to be safe, then definitely approved upon, you, you wouldn't want it to be.
Yeah, we got, it's, it's all, it's all by the city, so we have responsibility on how it's.
So I would just, I guess, hope that whatever, um, happens, the committee feels like they had some room to discuss and meet and, um, not necessarily make decisions, but just, um, take progress there, um, as they continue. This may be another decade before each phase is finished, so I would want them to be able to continue to meet together.
I, I would hope that the, uh, the city at some point in time does commit some funds to get that done, one way or the other, whether it's ones we've got in our financial plan that allows for that, or I think there's been some discussion about potential bonding or whatever it is.
I appreciate your willing to work, willingness to work together. That's great, thank you.
Councilmember Swanson, I think that on the park thing that that once you give one group of private citizens the ability to do what they want with a park because they've raised the funds privately, then we give, we have to extend that same right to any group on any park. So if my wife and I and our neighbors decided, if not you park behind us, that we wanted to, we raised the money and we decided we wanted to make a major modification to the park because we liked it. If we allow it once, then it has to be allowed again. So the city always has to be in control of what's happening on city property for that very reasons, because you just never know, right? Somebody else might come along and have some really wacky idea. And, well, I've got the public funds and I've got support and I've got a volunteer group, but the city has to, for liability purposes, and because that's what we're elected to do, is maintain that fiduciary responsibility. So we're certainly not going to get in the way, right? We're, we, we just have to make sure that.
I can assure you, no marijuana fields are planted.
They're down the road.
Yeah, they're already done.
All right, nice discussion, good to have a discussion. Anything, any other public comments?
Northoggin, all this discussion about the finances, we might be, um, I wanted to ask about the, I saw the article, um, Hooper with their new tax, and they're, they have to implement the tax on the, on the power and the, and the gas, and we already have that. Uh, but I was just curious as to what kind of money Northoggin raises on those taxes, on those fees, and where that money goes, just.
Franchise fees.
Mm-hmm.
It's similar to one. It's just over a million, about a million thirty thousand.
It goes to general fund, correct?
General fund, yeah. So it's what subsidizes the police and the parks and things like that.
And follow-up question, we, there was some discussion, I'm just curious where we're at on the public safety tax, uh, the things have been discussed a couple of times.
Yeah, I talked with the consultant this last week, and they are updating and finalizing that, the parks, and then water, sewer, and storm are going to be coming later, but we anticipate, uh, police and parks should be sometime in the next six weeks to the council.
Okay, thank you.
Reed Miller, I just want to make just a little point on this fencing issue with regard to public property. And we have an inalienable rights of life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. Liberty is freedom to do things. If we, as a council, give a, a person the, uh, the trust of having a lease, then we need to be aware that, you know what, they have, you know, the desire to develop and, and to do things, and, and hopefully it's, you know, appropriate and makes for a good look. Perhaps, uh, in, instead of saying, hey, you can't have any fencing, perhaps you could say, hey, put up a fence in twenty-five percent or more. But then if you, you break the lease, then make sure you take down that fencing, unless the city or the newly sea approves that, or something like that. That's no comment.
Anyone else see? Okay. Comments from staff this evening?
George, would you like to stand up here?
Just real quick, real quick.
Just real quick, we, uh, we got all banner, the military banner down, uh, we have them packaged and labeled. So, um, I know that you guys kind of split up with who you guys were calling. I didn't know if you guys wanted to let know that they're ready for, if they would like to come pick them up, or we can deliver them, you know, if they're still living in the city. Just kind of wanted to see what you wanted to do.
Let's, let's discuss them, okay.
There's just one, that I did have someone that he didn't know what happened to his son's banner.
Okay.
So it was, um, Hannah Riley. So did you see that one? I mean, we just want to make sure that. Yeah, just, just. Like that, okay.
Thanks. Thanks, David. Any other staff comments?
Go. Um, just two quick things, um, we, I talked with the police about getting a crime bulletin back online. Um, and they will be doing that. And then I'm going to try and do my capital projects update at the first council meeting of the month. Um, so that'll be not next week, but the week after. So, um, and we'll just put that back on the radar.
Just have one clarification, where did Mr. George go? Oh, there he is. Changed tire today. Um, the streets over at Legacy Two, are they private or public? Scott, chime in if you know. John, chime in if you know.
Public.
They are public.
Yeah, Legacy One is private, Legacy Two is public.
We, we have a resident who is concerned about the cracks because elderly people will trip on them.
Yeah.
I can, I'll get you the info.
And that's all I have. In general, we do encourage people to use the sidewalks when walking as opposed to the streets, but just as a.
I'm just passing along the message.
Yeah.
I already got holes in me. Uh, Dave, I think this is the same person you may have talked to already. We had that discussion.
Couple days ago.
Uh, a couple of weeks ago. I think you made contact with them.
Okay.
Check your notes. We'll see you after I pull that. Go online with you, Councilmember Dogpass.
Yeah, I think next Tuesday, John, correct me if I'm wrong, we have our, uh, special meeting for R D A.
The work session, yeah.
Work session. So just a reminder to everyone here that we'll be doing that. And what time is that one starting?
Six, yeah.
Let's see, did I see another hand down there, Councilmember Severing?
Yeah, I had to reach out, just wanted to know where we were at. She's really excited about the pick of all. Court and said, where are we at? Has it started? And I said, I don't think so, but I will check and get back with you.
So with the discussion the council had, where we said, well, we could piecemeal it and do it ourselves, or we could hire one group, that part of that discussion was if we went with the one group that did Cradle to Grave on it, they would, they would not be finishing it until next year.
Okay.
And so that's the plan is, um, and we have been talking with them, um, the contract says summer of twenty twenty-four. And we said, wait, what does that mean? And they've essentially said, we are booked out, so if you want to use us, sign the contract. So.
So start and finish somewhere twenty twenty.
Yeah, and but every indication is it'll be the beginning and done by June, but
Okay.
as anticipated, but they're essentially in high demand, and they've said, if you don't want to play ball, then do it yourself. And they, they are one of the companies that does the covering, like the surfacing. And so we would end up using them for surfacing at some point anyways. But they basically said, we can't control the weather. So we'll pour when it's warm enough to pour, and we'll surface when, you know, thirty plus days later after the concrete's cured.
And then this one other thing, I was wondering if the council might consider, um, and Scott maybe clarify this, but when we talk about these development agreements and the site, site plans, did we say that if something is less than five percent, that you and the mayor can make that decision?
Only in the N P C's are. Only in the N P C's are.
Only in the N P C's are. Okay, I'm just wondering if maybe we ought to move that up a little bit from the five percent to something a little a little higher.
Agreed.
I mean, it doesn't seem very logical to have to come back from ninety-five percent of that. So with as many potential amendments as we see, or have the potential to see.
So we would need to bring that back as an amendment to the development agreement.
Oh, to the development agreement.
Or to the N P C code.
To the, if you say, oh, yeah. I'm just thinking that, you know, we went through so many amendments with, uh, I'm just thinking, you know, that we really want to have that maybe kind of fourth, I see Councilman Swanson, uh, yeah, that might be something. So just for consideration of the, of the future. Mayor, you're giving me that look.
Whatever I can do to help, you know.
We have confidence in, uh, I think I've spoken on the council, we have confidence in Scott's decisions.
It's there to help. All right, we'll see what the council wants to do, John, if you'll bring that back. And Scott? Is the recommendation? Anything else? I would just add, uh, you probably received some of the comments, same as I have, about maintaining our retention basins. You know, my, my position on it is, we've had the discussion with David and John, is that, you know, some of the natural, uh, growth is probably going to remain, but, you know, we ask our citizens to maintain their property, right? I've always believed that it starts with us. So Dave is committed to do the best they can. It's a big job with limited resources. But we are aware of that situation, and we're trying to address it as quickly as we can. So that's, that's my report. Anything else?
We have an estimate on when the flagpole is going to get fixed. Yes, it is really anxious to have the flagpole, the flagpole.
Yeah, I think they're supposed to be here, so because it's so high and we can't get a lift truck, or we reduce some damage or other things, so we actually have a guy coming to climb the pole. That's what he does for.
He's a pole coach.
Yes, and he will replace all of those things, those units. He was actually waiting on a part more than him.
More than him.
So it should be in the next couple of weeks, I know that.
Okay, very good. I think I have, have a swat.
Can we please get a video?
Record it.
Yes, I would love to, yeah, that would be awesome.
Oh, wow.
Okay, cool.
All right. I guess we go to number, I have number eleven on our agenda.
No, it's a two turn.
No, it's a two turn, I'm reading as a turn, thank you.